I'm speaking to Asher. Is it the first time you've called on the council?
The UK is in the grip of a cost of living crisis.
We've got a massive hike in energy bills.
I had one pound fifty in my hand. Where am I going to get a lecture from?
Does the right thing call money?
Members, we invite members to join in our evening prayer. For I to God, the source of knowledge and understanding, guide the minds of those of us without that to take counsel together on matters concerning discounted, that in our debate and in our decisions, we may faithfully discharge our duties of office and promote the health, safety and wellbeing of those we seek to serve through Jesus Christ our Lord. Further, councillors, officers and members of the public, for inviting via the Zoom webcast, welcome to our council meeting this evening. Before we get to the agenda proper, I'd like to remind members to please ensure your microphone is switched on and when speaking for the benefit of the webcast and recording. Thank you now for the proper agenda. Right, apologies.
Chairman, we receive apologies from councillors Blanksby, Paul Cross, Harvey and Tozland, therefore councillors' votes as twenty-two this evening.
Thank you. Chairman's announcements. I haven't actually been to anything since Christmas, so I'd like to take this opportunity to say a few words about two of our most senior officers, Sad Del Roca and John Morley, who have both been leaving the council before our next meeting. Sad first joined us in 2012 in an interim role before joining us permanently in 2013 as our section one five one officer and assistant director for finance, followed several years later by promotion as strategic director for resources for the remainder of his tenure. John has been with us since 2015, initially in the head of service role before also progressing to become a deputy director in 2018 and subsequently to strategic director of adult services and health. Both officers served in our council's corporate leadership team during times of change and challenge at council, not least during the pandemic, and led their service areas with distinction. It's a testament to both individuals and our council that they were able to develop and progress in their careers to such high levels whilst remaining here in Rutland. And I'm sure I speak for all members when I say that we are incredibly grateful for both officers' support and guidance to us all over their years of service and wish them both well for the future. Item three, announcements from leader member of Cabinet for head of paid service. Councillor Stevenson.
Thank you very much, Chair. I would like to take this opportunity to thank councillor Oxley, both personally and as leader of the council for the time he served on Cabinet. Councillor Oxley is one of our longest-serving members. His passion and dedication over the years, the expertise and experience brought much to this cabinet and continues to do so for this council. Thank you, councillor Oxley. I'm sure it will come as no surprise to members that I will not be bringing a sixth member on to Cabinet this close to the local government elections. I've therefore shared councillor Oxley's portfolio between the existing members of Cabinet. Leisure will sit with councillor Harvey as part of the health and wellbeing agenda. Culture moves to me as it has natural synergies with our economic development. And councillor Powell has kindly agreed to take on environmental services, climate change and community safety as this sits well with our public realm. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Decorations of interest.
Yes, Chair, it's my annual one on fees and charges. I have an award for a business in Upperton and I knew you'd be really sorry if I didn't declare that this year.
I'd be disappointed if we hadn't got the May phones somewhere. Councillor Bates. Gift her. Anybody else? No, thank you. Item five, minutes of the previous meeting. Going to have a proposal, a second, opposed councillor Stevenson, second councillor Powell. All those in favour? Oh, no. Abstentions? No, two. Councillor Brown. Chief Brown. Item eight, petitions, deputations and questions from members of the public. We have one deputation this evening from David Baker on behalf of Grieveham Parish Council and the details have been circulated in the agenda supplement. Mr Baker will have five minutes to present the deputation following which members may ask any questions of Mr Baker for a further five minutes. Such questions will be asked and answered without discussion. Can I ask Mr Baker to come up to the Chair, please? If you turn the microphone on. Red button. Thank you.
First of all, thank you for allowing this deputation, which concerns Grieveham Quarry's safety this evening. As a last resort, we feel a deputation on this subject is necessary in order to engage the Rutter County Council with its statutory responsibilities. The old Grieveham Quarry is nowhere near and in places the quarry floor is fifty feet below surrounding ground level. According to the Quarry's National Joint Advisory Committee, quarry operators should provide barriers to comply with regulation sixteen of the Quarry Regulations nineteen ninety-nine Act. In brief, the regulations require quarry operators to ensure that where appropriate, properly maintained and suitable barriers are provided around the boundary of the quarry for purposes for purpose of discouraging trespass. Under section one five one of the Langdon Quarry's Act of nineteen fifty-four, any quarry worked at all which does not have an efficient and properly maintained barrier designed and constructed to prevent people from accidentally falling into the quarry and by which reason of its accessibility from a road or public place constitutes a danger to members of the public is deemed to be a statutory nuisance in the environment protection act. The local authority, not the Health and Safety Executive, enforces this provision. Grieveham Parish Council is a world that of several areas when the perimeter of the old quarry in Grieveham were adventurous and curious children could gain access and fall over into a fifty-foot drop. There's very little evidence of any warning of the dangers. Any remaining sites are over twenty years old, broken and lying flat on the ground. As you would want, both the old and the new quarry bandits are very close to the village and the community centre with playgrounds and that area of children could be in danger. Since July, since July twenty twenty-one, Grieveham Parish Council has recorded following actions. In July twenty twenty-one, we identified at least one large hole in the fencing leading to a fifty-foot drop and brought it to the attention of the operator, Mick George, who noted. They responded by erecting a fence with chicken wire and attached two danger keeping signs. Grieveham Parish Council went in October twenty twenty-one to Mick George regarding the continued concerns and they advised that they had undertaken inspection of the perimeter around the entire side and they considered that there is no easy way to access the quarry. Grieveham Parish Council strongly disagreed with this statement and noted the planning enforcement officer on the first of December twenty twenty-one providing with the guidance information and Mick George's response and requesting that he obtain from Mick George the risk assessment being undertook to come to this conclusion. On February fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, the development manager advised councillor Beggy that the planning enforcement officer and the environmental health officer would walk the entire boundary and inspect the fences to make sure it is secure. Grieveham Parish Council has requested a brief report on this site but to date has had no response. In July twenty twenty-two, the quarry death was detailed in the press. A fifteen-year-old boy died and a fourteen-year-old girl was laid in critical condition at quarry in Upperton Valley. And in the same month, a boy of sixteen drowned in an abandoned quarry in Lancashire. On fifteenth of July, twenty twenty-two, the Cheltenham Grieveham Parish Council walked the entire quarry perimeter with the development manager, who agreed that the perimeter fencing was not sufficient to discourage trespassers and that there were dangerous gaps in the hedging of bums. After chasing yet again for a ward member councillor Beggy, Grieveham Parish Council was advised that, was advised in January twenty twenty-three, that they should undertake yet another walk under the perimeter. But this time with jobs under it. And finally, at a meeting held on Saturday, John Gibbons of Parliament Homes, the contractors who were building the houses within the quarry in February twenty twenty-three, he confirmed, he confirmed being the landlord and has not been made aware of the fencing issue. So we seem to be in a situation which has dragged on now for over two years and needs to be resolved to ensure that there is no danger for children at Grieveham. This is to be resolved not by Grieveham Parish Council. We don't have the ability to resolve this issue, but it's the enforcing authority which is Rutter County Council. Do you think Councillor Powell, that's a lesson, would ask that Rutter County Council review the situation immediately before there's a tragedy on the doorstep?
Thank you very much. Members, do you have any questions for Mr Baker? Councillor Abraham.
Thank you, Mr Baker. I was just wondering what, where in statute it says that RCC is responsible for enforcing section one five one of the Mines and Quarries Act?
That's what the law is protecting after the statutory use of it. In fact, I hope it won't be doing actual advocacy, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Powell.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr Baker, for your deputation. And I'm sorry that you felt that you had to bring this deputation to full council as a last resort rather than escalate this by your ward member councillor Beggy to me as the portfolio holder. From the details you've provided, I can see that officers at Rutland County Council have been actively working with you on this matter. That having been said, I must stress that safety is an absolute priority and concern, something that Rutland does take, the responsibilities does take very seriously. I agree that this matter has gone on for long enough and I've made it clear to officers that it does need to be followed up and resolved as a matter of urgency and ask them to keep me as a portfolio holder personally informed.
Thank you.
That's actually, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you very much, Mr Baker. Thank you all for coming. Item seven, questions from members of the council. Item eight, approval of committed decisions to the council.
Namaste, Chair.
Item nine, calling of decisions from Cabinet.
Namaste, Chair.
Thank you. So we go straight to item ten. We have one report from the Cabinet this evening regarding the council's budget for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Members, please note that in accordance with procedure rule eight, any rule taking any votes relating to the budget or level of council tax will be recorded and this includes any votes on amendments. In a slight update to the recorded vote process, members will be asked to raise their hands as normal, but keep them raised while governors mark every individual's vote on a prepared sheet. It is therefore vital for members to keep their arms raised for the duration of the voting so that their vote is not inaccurately recorded. Councillor Payne, I believe you're going to introduce a report, please.
Thank you, Chair. The first item on the report is the Treasury Management and Capital Management Strategy. Rutland County Council takes a cautious, low-risk approach to Treasury Management and Capital Investment Strategies, which has placed us in a positive position in this regard compared to some other councils. Others have overstretched themselves with excessive quarrying investments in property or other commercial ventures, which means they are now in financial trouble with government intervention or the issuing of the section one one four notices. Regulatory bodies have now tightened regulations and requirements to prevent what they consider to be reckless activity by some councils. However, we at Rutland County Council will continue our strategy which has served us well to this point. That is, we do not borrow for commercial investments. We will not borrow unless there are revenue benefits and we will continue to place investment security above yield. Because of this strategy, many of the new regulations do not affect us. The new regulations are detailed in your document. Sample points to note that do have an impact on this R. There is a requirement for the council to keep documented records of training processes of members. This will commence for members following the next election in May. There is also a requirement for a quarterly report to be produced for members on the prudential indicators. We will introduce an additional verification on the status of other local authorities. Where the authority is subject to DLUHC intervention, they will not be included as a suitable counterparty for investment. So, for example, some members will remember that in twenty twenty-two, we loaned some money to Thirrock Borough Council. This was repaid, but with additional verification, investment in Thirrock would not be allowed. The Capital Investment Strategy sets out key principles and main drivers, as you will see in the papers, and aligns our capital projects to our corporate strategy. Currently, this is short term, over two to three years only. We will be aligned with the strategy to support our local plan as it emerges, which will mean a ten-year plan will be delivered in due course together with the prioritisation process. The Treasury Management and Capital Strategy went to Strategic Equity and Scrutiny Committee on the twenty-sixth of January, where there was one question received regarding ethical investing. Chair, I ask council to approve those strategies. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Councillor Stevenson. Members. Councillor Beggy. So Treasury Management Strategy and Capital Investment Strategy. Members. Straight to the day? Yeah. So, report number one, twenty twenty-three, Treasury Management Strategy and Capital Investment Strategy. One approves the Treasury Management Strategy in appendix one, including investment strategy, borrowing strategy, minimum revenue provisions, vacant and capital expenditure, prudential indicators. And two approves the Capital Investment Strategy in appendix two. All in favour?
All the record, Chair, and managing numbers.
Report number four, twenty twenty-three, the fees and charges. Approve the level of fees and charges for twenty-three, twenty-four set out in appendices A, B and C. Approve the new fees for highways. And we've got a lot more there. Everybody has got copies of them. So. Councillor Beggy.
Beggy, Chair. Just a short, a few words. The council seeks to recover costs amounting to four point two million from its fees and charges. The fees and charges in the document will be affected from the first of April twenty-three. Some of these are set nationally and we have no influence over these. Others are set locally. You will see recommendations to introduce some new fees for highways, waste and recycling and a monitoring and management fee for host of the first twenty-two. An inflation rate of ten percent has been applied across all fees unless there is a business justification to do something different. There are a small number of fees where no increase is proposed. Typically, this is either because there has been a recent increase or where increases may negatively impact income yield. The fees and charges went from twenty-three, twenty-four went to Strategic Equity and Scrutiny on the twenty-sixth of January and then questions or comments were raised. I'm asking council to approve the fees and charges paid from the document, Chair.
Second, councillor Stevenson. Members. Councillor Moore.
Thank you, Chairman. I don't have any questions about the fees and charges and we did all have opportunities to talk about them at scrutiny. What I would say though is, can we please think quite carefully about how we're going to communicate the outcome from tonight to our populace? We all understand that some of these decent charges are set nationally. I'm not sure our residents do. And we know where we are increasing and why we are increasing. And again, I'm not sure our residents do. And the one that we, I'm sure all will get criticised about is charging for green waste collection. But actually ours isn't any more expensive than anywhere else is and cheaper than many. So that's my least bad.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councillor T. Brown.
Thank you, Chair. Suddenly, I was unable to attend the scrutiny meeting of our opponents. One thing I would have raised here would be paragraph four point four one, taxes. And Councillor Stevenson will agree with me that this has been on the agenda now for, I think it's now four years. And we're talking consultation and dealing with some assurance that this will all be dealt with in the next twelve months, at least. I appreciate that maybe a change amongst some of the councillors on that, over that period of time. I think it's important that we have a clear policy on taxes. We have been talking about it. There's a fundamental change coming forward based on the Peterborough advice we had from Peterborough City Council, who are advisors in this matter. I think it's important that we do get this sorted out. And there's an even possibility here as well that we should do it.
I'll conduct the Transport Department holder this way. I'm talking as well.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Yes, I agree it's important. I'm a great believer in that we need to get things done quicker and certainly that I would commit that that gets underway and as is completed, I think it's important that is concluded for all parties.
Thank you. Anybody else? So, all in favour? For the record, twenty-one, Chair. Again, abstentions? Councillor Bates. For the record, councillor Bates is abstained. We're going to number thirty-seven, twenty twenty-three, revenue and capital budget.
Thank you, Chair. Right, council, I present to you the net budget of forty-six point five four nine million for the financial year twenty-three, twenty-four. The budget delivers two key priorities. It allows us to keep delivering the good service we are delivering today, investing in the care sector, supporting hospital discharge, a new waste management service, maintaining our roads to a high standard, access to public transport, improving our digital offer, supporting demand for special educational needs transport and developing a new local plan, to name just some of our corporate priorities. It also sets out the right path for us to be financially sustainable and independent. We do not want to be swallowed up and lose control of our identity, funding and service delivery. The context we are working in is understood by everyone in this chamber. There are difficult, these are difficult economic times. Inflation has an impact on it and all we are seeing as a council is rising costs and suppliers struggling. You can see this in the budget. We know that many councils currently face bankruptcy and government intervention. In some places, there is talk of ten and fifty percent council tax rises and I am so glad that we do not find ourselves in this position. One of the other important points of context is that our world is so uncertain. It's really frustrating. I made a list of things I would like to know. What will our government funding be for the next five years? Or three, at least? Will any government be prepared to fix our broken funding system? Will inflation be back under control in twelve months? Will the government go ahead with CARECAP reforms and fully fund them? Will we get good deals when we let big contracts like highways? Or will we have to pay more than what we would like to or want to? If we knew the answers to these questions, we would be able to plan so much more effectively. But we don't know the answers. We can't predict with any certainty our income and expenditure for the next five years. There are so many unknowns, as I say. We have to plan and manage risk against a set of assumptions. It may turn out well than we think. Conversely, it may turn out worse. So in this risky, volatile situation, the budget aims to put us in the best possible position for when that uncertainty is lifted. Our budget does three things. It uses reserves to balance the books over the medium-term financial plan. Five hundred and ninety thousand in twenty-three, twenty-four and over one point four million the following year. The government has said, use your reserves to help you through difficult times and that is our plan. We are making service savings of one point eight million and plan to make four million pounds more over the four-year period. Four million pounds is easy to say, but it is a lot that we are aiming for. We propose raising council tax by four point nine nine percent. Two point nine nine percent council tax and two percent adult social care precept. It is less than the rate of inflation which is running at ten percent. And we are also setting aside funds to help those in need. Scrutiny committee raised the issue of those who may need help due to the cost of living crisis. My thanks to the committee for raising this. We fully support the drawing down of normality to help people if needed and I'd ask to be kept fully informed in this regard. Doing these three things gives Rutland the best opportunity to deliver despite the turmoil going on around us. If we don't do these three things, then we could face a very difficult future and are likely to face bankruptcy unless every single assumption we have made goes in our favour. Following the elections in May, we want to hand the council over to the next administration, whoever it may be, in a fit and sustainable condition. We are not making short-term risky promises to gain votes. Thank you, Chair.
Second, councillor Stevenson. Members.
Councillor Beggy. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. If possible, I'd like to try and table an amendment to the proposal. But first I'd like to thank Karen and Sad, the incredible hard work that's going into this. We know there's no easy solution. We've been through this in a great detail and we do not look forward to this dislikely. The report approved by Cabinet and being presented to council for accruals suggests there is no alternative to a two percent adult social care levy and a two point nine nine percent increase in local council council tax in the total of nearly five percent a year. We believe there is an alternative to help with a real cost of living crisis faced by our residents. Could the council tax be just one percent plus the adult social care levy by two percent plus three percent in total? According to the report, this would cost approximately three million pounds over the period twenty-six to twenty-seven. We've identified the following opportunities for members to consider about how we can then balance the budget. Firstly, when council approves plans of stability strategy, the forecast for the general fund reserve is seven point eight million by twenty-seven, twenty-eight. In the budget MTFP, this is written by three million to just over eleven million pounds, an increase of three million. Secondly, in the Treasury Management Strategy, the council has between fifty million to sixty-two million available to invest. In response to the group's scrutiny question about interest receivable on deposits, that number is reduced from forty-one to twenty-one million. In addition, there is a dampening of twenty percent to accommodate changes in balances below these already reduced sums and early reduction in base rates. If only five million was added to these balances with a range of forty-six to twenty-six over the same period and the dampening removed, there could be further two million. and the dampening removed, there could be further £2 million received in interest payments. Point three, the contingency. We end the budget, the contingency of 0.5% expenditure, about £245k. However, this percentage rises to 1.5, 2.4, 3.4 and 4.3 in subsequent years. Maintaining contingency in the MTFP at 0.5% over the planned period will increase general fund reserve by £5.3 million. Even at 1% of expenditure, it will increase reserves by £4 million. Point four, savings target over the planned period. The financial sustainability strategy was approved with savings of £16.8 million over the period 2627. In the budget, only £11.9 million savings are being called for, a difference of nearly £5 million. And finally, in the treasury management strategy, an overpayment of £2 million has been made to the minimum revenue position account. While it would not be wise to put this into general reserves or use it to fund current expenditure, in extremis, this could be further supported for the general reserves if they were ever to drop over £3 million minimum level to which councillors agreed. In 2021, the council supported an increase of only 3%, including the adult social care levy of 2% against the strong advice of the 151 officer. However, the impact of that decision did not result in a significant decline in reserves. In fact, there was an increase. The amendment we put forward is, we propose the following amendments for the meeting, that council approves a 1% increase in local council tax and a 2% increase in the social care levy, giving a total increase of 3%. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Do I have a second, Councillor G. Brown? Members?
Thank you, Chair. I think we'd all like to see a lesser increase in our council tax or no increase at all. But I mean, I've looked at the figures, and I think we'd be on a very dangerous path if we weren't to increase it by the maximum allowed. There's a reason we have a section 151 officer, and we've got a particularly good one here, and it's because they know the ins and outs of the financial pressures that this council faces, because they work with the figures and budgets every single day. And it's their job to make recommendations based on their experience and knowledge of the situation we face. And as with the planning committee, to go against the officer's recommendation needs sound reasoning, and of course, it must adhere to planning law, and I think the same logic applies here. I'm sure the members proposing this amendment do so with laudable intent, but there seems to be a lot of conjecture in the points raised. The increase in general funds reserves is a forecast and not a given. Item two states there could be a further £2 million received in interest. There could be no guarantee. And item four says that £11.9 million of savings has to be made, but of course, that £11.9 million of savings still has to be made. And item five mentions an in extremis event. We do not want to get into a situation of extremists where our general reserves are dropped below £3 million. Our neighbouring authorities are pulling up their council tax by the maximum, and speaking to others from around the country, they are all doing the same. Parish councils in my ward have increased their precepts by between 12 and 15%, and were surprised that we were only allowed a 5% increase when inflation is running at over 10%. We only need a couple of very high-dependency children to move into Rotherham, and we could be looking at finding an extra half a million pounds just to look after those two. I have a lot of sympathy for those who will not be able to afford the 5% increase, but would they be able to afford a 3% increase as the amendment proposes? If they're in financial difficulties, we'll still have to support them, and those who could afford the 5% increase will not then be contributing as much as they could, and all the residents of Rotherham will suffer in the long run. Back in 2021, I supported the full 4.99% increase, and I still think it's prudent and good evidence to apply the full increase now. The expression "short-term gain for long-term pain" comes to mind, and without it, we will become dependent on external forces over which we have no control. So I'm afraid I cannot support this amendment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councillor G. Brown.
Thank you, Chair. Also, I'd like to thank the 151 officer for his detailed comments in the paper, which produced a lot of amendments. The amendment is clear, I think, and as expected, understandably, this 151 officer states he cannot support the recommendation of the amendment. I can't understand her position. However, fellow councillors, when our local council demands council tax payment from residents, and those are the words that we use in our life that goes out to our residents every year, we demand this money. We should remember that it's not our money that we're spending, it's not the council's money, it's not the cabinet's money, it's not the portfolio's money, and it's not the officer's money. This money belongs, at the end of the day, to our residents. That's who we're taking this money from. And we should remember that from every pound, 80 pence comes, I mean, more than 80 pence, comes from our residents to pay for services. We should consider any increase in tax very carefully. We as councillors should think about every penny we spend, and we should be, as already we have, the highest council, well, the highest council tax in the country. We should not make matters worse by not dealing with an increasing cost many forced on us by government. I also have a careful review of this budget, having produced a number of questions for scrutiny, and I take a slightly different view from section 151 officer. And I do that because of the circle of experience in budget setting. Having been a chief exec and a chairman of many businesses through my 50-year career, ranging from 10 million turnover businesses to 1.5 billion turnover businesses. You will all see in the supporting paper, which company, there are a number of areas that we believe slightly different outcomes could generate the £3 million that section 151 officer has indicated that we would miss by not having the council tax increase by the maximum 2.99%. That they lost by 2728. But again, I go back to the point that councillor Penny raised, and that was just a few months ago, we stood here, or we sat here, at some school, when we discussed the financial transformation strategy. At that time, we were told our reserves would be acceptable if there were £8 million. We're now looking at this budget at £11 million. And as councillor Payne said, government has already said, don't be using our reserves. Also, on that same financial transformation strategy, we have been saving up £17 million over the same period to 2027. For now saying we only need £12 million, £5 million less. Why cannot we as councillors work together to realise these savings earlier rather than later, rather than forcing increases on our residents? I could argue there's some leeway in the amount of that contingency, and I could argue there'd be more interest. Each of these provides some headspace towards our local council tax rise. But it's so much easier for councillors, and officers to some extent, to recommend an increase in council tax every year, rather than making the difficult decisions to cut our costs. Now, a range of ATP of everything we spend is provided by our residents. Do we not have a duty to try and minimise the increase in council tax and work harder to reduce our costs? Overall, I do believe there's a leeway in the budget to only increase council tax by 1% for coming year, and therefore, support the amendment. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Moore.
Thank you, Chair. I have a lot of sympathy with this proposed amendment, but it's with a very heavy heart that I have to say I cannot support it, and that I have to support the recommendation of our section 151 officer. A very experienced officer, who more than that is very well networked into his contemporaries across the country, and is very aware of what other local authorities are doing and the reasons that they are doing it. We've heard tonight about, oh, don't have to put in this increase that's being proposed for us because we can work leaner and make savings and so on. We must remember that this budget includes significant savings, and savings that we may not achieve. We also have to be very aware that we are not in control of our expenditure. We have demand-led services, which Mr. Brown, Andrew Brown, referred to in terms of children's social care and adult social care. We only need one family to move into Rotherham, and our children's social care budget has grown, and it's happened. It's happened in the 12 years I've been a councillor, certainly. And we don't know what staff salary increases are going to be. We do know what other authorities have put in their budgets, which is more than we have in many, many cases. And we cannot say, well, we just won't pay the staff pay increases because we're part of a national pay bargaining system in the same way as nurses, teachers and so on are. And so there are just, as councillor Karen Payne pointed out, there are a lot of questions, but unfortunately, not a lot of answers. There are a lot of variables. Yes, we may not need 4.99%, but unfortunately, I think we might, and we might have to cut even more than we propose. And our contracts that we've been letting, we know we've had difficulty with two major contracts in the last six months because the contractors are asking more than we were anticipating spending, and we've got to spend in the budget going forward, but we still have to let a waste contract. We will still be reviewing our leisure provision going forward, I'm sure. And so it is with a very, very heavy heart that I feel I'm going to have to support the original recommendation of 4.99%. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Moore.
Thank you, Chair. I should be quite pleased by that. I recognise what Mr. Andrew Brown was saying about our 151 officer. Very experienced, very professional, and he's had my fancy writing in the last few days for his service. However, there is a difference between the section 151 officer and planning officers. Planning officers are there giving advice on the law, planning. The section 151 officer has that role as well, but in terms of setting the budget, it is his advice. And I believe his advice, it will be a truism to always propose the maximum income and the minimum expenditure so as to protect the council from any possible risk. So I think it's not a fair comparison. In terms of being demand-led, yes, we are, but we can influence that demand by influencing expectations and also the manner in which we address those demands and the cost of addressing those demands. So when I support this amendment, which I'm minded to at the moment, I hope the council will not be disappointed, because I believe it's the right thing to do for our citizens. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Henderson.
Thank you very much, Chair. Firstly, I would like to thank all our officers, but in particular, the finance team that I said that I would come. Your advice is always sound and clearly explained, but today, I think we have to look at what we can do. There's been highlighted there are potential risks of deviating from the original recommendation, but following a plan that clearly never addresses our core funding will create a tipping point that will be far greater repercussions. The opening words to this paper under item two, words from our leader. Whilst it's great to have a reminder of where we are, and the words that particularly caught my attention was, we deal with it here and now. And tonight, that is exactly what we are doing. Firstly, there are questions that need to be asked. Why are we still in this position of unfairness? Simply because national governments are unable to hear us? I've sat in meetings, and we have laid out our position and simple replies are, you can raise more money locally. This is quite true. But at some point, we all know we have to stop doing something when it is not addressing root problems and look for alternatives. So far, we have played to the government's tune, and we have now won the highest council taxes in the country, raising 80% from our residents. I ask all of you to think of the pressure that we are heaping on our residents. There is a saying, the straw that broke the camel's back, and I sincerely believe that this could be the one. Why do I say this? I've had more contacts via email and calls on this matter than any other single issue in the seven-plus years I've been a councillor, and we've had some interesting topics in those times. And these have come from all over the county. But they've also come from people who are in all walks of life. They're young people starting out with families, they're retired, they're people who are working, people with successful businesses. And they're saying, please do not raise this council tax by the full 4.99%. I've had conversations with them around the cost of living crisis and the fact that Rotherham County councillors equally facing the rising costs. I highlighted this to them, and they still say, can we please do something different? I understand it, but there's a real danger for some of these people that they will be overwhelmed, or we will be overwhelmed, by a number of people who will need additional help from us. There may be other needs, and not maybe only financial, it could also be mental health issues. We will start driving out the core of our counties because they can't afford to live here. But people contacting me come from all demographics, as I've said, and I think we now need to change the way we're thinking, and that needs to happen now. We are elected to represent our residents, and that is all of them, not just the ones that we know or the ones we identify with. It is our duty to stand up for them, and I get we have to make some tough decisions, but I wholeheartedly believe that we need to focus on the cause and address that and stop following the five hydra of the natural government. I'm hoping we will be allowed some crumbs off the table to help us out. I asked the leader on our MP to quadruple down on this issue, stop suggesting it would be all right. If matters carry on doing the same thing, in effect, a different result. I fully support the amendment. Finally, I would hope that even if one voted for full council tax increases previously, every one of us can vote as we think, and we will listen to our electorate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. When the details of this were submitted a week ago, I could appreciate the enormous amount of work that has gone into putting this amendment together, because this is no small undertaking to crunch the numbers that you were crunched and the ideas that you have in order to bring this to us tonight as an option. It put me in a very difficult position because I don't know what to do with it, I didn't know what to do with it. The more I did listen, the more I realised how difficult a decision this is. I am comforted by our section 151 officer's significant level of expertise in this area, and I would make some notes tonight during talks that I've made, which I'll just share my thoughts on. So we have just been through, and I'm still going through that, so one of the biggest outstanding exercises in the generation of Rotherham County Council, we have turned off lights, we've stopped printing, we've closed the front desk. We need to put ourselves back into a position of a budget surplus in order that we can turn on the lights again, open the front desk, and start printing things to keep our residents better informed of what we are doing. It would be extremely unfair of us to vote now to take a lower share of funding than that which is available to us. It would be extremely unfair on all of that work which has taken place by every officer employed by the Rotherham County Council and every member sitting in this room and those not here, the level of work that everybody is putting in about. The fact is, our residents are seeing services cut. We have to get ourselves into a position to reopen these as soon as we possibly can. If we don't take this money now, we can't come back and ask for an additional 2% in six or eight months' time if we find that we do need it. It is possible that we won't need all this, and I accept that. But there's no guarantee that we won't. In 2020, while we did go with the same country, I did work there at the time. And then my reserves didn't decline as a result. But there is no guarantee that this will happen again. We do face significant risks. All the prices are risen. Yes, inflation might be settling. It might start to ease, it might come down. But I don't believe that prices will drop to where they were 12, 18 months ago. It's also possible, Ben, that things will get harder. We don't know what's going to happen in the next 12 months. We've seen what's happened in the last 12 months. Only last week, I saw the leaders of the US and Russia putting forward some of the most standoffish rhetoric that I've seen for some considerable time. Now, if anything, that scares me because what we learn from historical examples of rhetoric like that is that situations only get worse. And when they get worse, everything gets worse. And that is not a scenario in which I see inflation continuing to drop. So for me, the big risks still remain. And I do feel that I'm afraid I cannot support the amendment, although it makes me deeply sorry to not be able to do so because I do feel that we must take the maximum level of funding available to us. Thank you.
Councillor Walsh.
Tonight, councillors are asking us to approve an increase in council tax of 4.99%. I have reviewed the budget papers presented to us several times. I appreciate that we are in unprecedented times when inflation makes 10%, which makes our costs higher and unpredictable. However, inflation has decreased by 1% since October. The budget is based on assumptions of what may or may not happen. It's a good guess made by our chief finance officer based on his very long experience. The same chief finance officer, we told him last year we would have shortfall of over £2 million and assured us that we needed to raise council tax by 5%. The outcome was not a deficit or a break even, but we actually added a substantial amount to our reserves. Our residents, especially those of younger families and retired on fixed pensions, are really struggling with the cost of living crisis. Young families are seeing large increases in their mortgage payments. Their heating costs have trebled. Their weekly shop has increased by 16%. Car fuel costs and mobile phone increases of 14%. A 5% increase may be the straw that breaks a camel's back. Every pound in your pocket counts when you're trying to do weekly shop. And many residents are having to make a decision between heating the house or eating. A 5% increase may well be the straw that breaks a camel's back. More and more people are turning to the bank to buy for help. We are sat on nearly £15 million in reserves when our lowest degree threshold is £3 million. That is five times more than our agreed threshold, and we are asking more because we're concerned about the risk over the next five years. Many of our residents are worried about how they're going to get through the next month. Going for the maximum increase, in my opinion, is immoral. I'd be voting for both amendments, and I would urge you to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councillor Beggins.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. Out of the meeting, I will ask Councillor Begley to give her the name of his opposition because I haven't found anybody who prescribes roast and dyspechia quite as well. But quite seriously, Councillor Begley, I think you've done us all a favour by putting this amendment forward because it's made us look at what we should and should not be doing. Now, it does seem to me, and if I sound flippant, I don't intend to, you can be serious without being solemn. There is undoubtedly a very seductive reason for this, particularly in an election year, that you go with public opinion. And we all recognise the hardship that some members of our community are suffering. And we recognise the national position. I think Councillor Payne said we've got the uncertainty of not being able to plan for five years. I certainly have been on this council when we were very lucky. We got a year's notice of what the ground was going to be and so on and so forth. So there is nothing new in that respect. What I've also seen is two or three attempts by a group of councillors to challenge whatever the budget was proposed. And it seems to me that it takes this sort of pattern. You make an assertion about how you can save money, et cetera, et cetera. You form a group, usually with Rutland in it, and there will be those members who will remember Mr Richardson of Rutland Choice talking about a £10 million black hole and coming with a huge pile of folders. He did not do what, and this is my own thinking, Councillor Begley, very genuinely, did not do the prep, did not do the 151 report, which you have done and consulted that, obviously. And therefore, this is a reasoned debate. There is an argument there. Before, it was simply a matter of assertion. But it does seem to me, Chairman, that there are two sorts of politicians in both national and local level. There are those who follow and those who lead as far as public opinion is concerned. I think the original proposal in this budget reflected a great deal of very serious thought, recognition of the uncertainties which other members have referred to. And there are lots of uncertainties. But it is basically a four-year budget. What is being proposed in the amendment is a one-year budget. And I think we need to look further forward than just a year. I realise with considerable shock, Chairman, that my eldest grandchildren will be eligible to vote in the next cycle of local elections. It did bring me up with a joke. I could not support this amendment to give them a civic legacy of uncertainty. As far as we can do, we owe it to the future generations to have something that is solid, reliable, and not based on a local, short-term opinion. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else? Councillor Burris.
Thank you, Chair. I'm a low-paid charity worker on a single-income household. I very much like to support this amendment. It's very appealing. As a councillor representing my residents in Rutland, having spent the weekend discussing, looking at the options, thinking about the risks, the sort of things that councillor Brown has raised, I just feel that it would be a very unfair thing to do to save that short-term amount of money and put ourselves in a long-term position of risk. I really respect the efforts being done by officers. We have excellent officers. The reports that we've had are of great quality, very understandable. We've consulted on this, we've looked at the budget, we've made savings. We need to now support this proposal as in its original. I do not support the amendment.
Thank you, Councillor Wilson.
Thank you, Chair. I'm glad to have you tonight, and I must admit that I found the over-cautious approach, totally disregard the deep financial anxieties that our residents face. We are sat on substantial reserves. We are asking for not to vote for residents, which was a very cheap shot by the way, Councillor Begley. Because it's an election year, we've been asked, "Can you care about our residents"? And it seems to me that we, as a council, should be using those reserves and the cuts that have been identified by the well-costed proposals to actually assist our residents. Frankly, I believe this budget 5% increase is overly cautious. And I believe that we must or should take cognisance of the needs of our residents. So I will be fully supporting this motion. And I'm really taken aback by this tremendously cautious what-if approach. We have to leave. Isn't that what we're elected for? Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Stevenson.
Thank you very much, Chair. When councillor Begley alerted members to this proposed amendment, I was pleased to note the motivation for its presentation was not a desire to posture politically. On a personal note, councillor Begley, for me, that went without saying. I know you were driven by the noble cause of doing your best for our residents. As you rightly point out, all of us face unprecedented increases in costs to our day-to-day living expenses. And so it is right that we should explore and question taxation and set it at a rational and reasonable level. Supporting this amendment or not must be based on reason and logic, a balanced view to be taken between the impact and risks. On a positive note, this proposal provides an opportunity to show residents that we understand the day-to-day pressures faced due to the current financial climate. Although it is interesting to note that the rate of council tax was not a topic of debate at any of the public consultation meetings councillor Payne and I held. Rather, there seemed to be an acceptance that with the rate of inflation sitting at over 10%, the maximum increase in council tax was logical. The same is quite simply costing a lot more. What people were consistently interested in and indeed asked some challenging questions was about what we spent our money on. The recent public interest in leisure provision, one obvious example. This proposed rate of 1% plus 2% for adult social care will save a bandy household just under £40 a year, reducing the revenue budget by £600,000 year-on-year, equating to a cost of £3 million. Can we afford that? In the short term, for '23, '24, yes. In the medium to long term, we don't know. There are simply too many uncertainties. Pay awards, inflation, interest rates, funding for rural authorities after a general election, the impact of the energy crisis, the ongoing war in Europe. If this gamble pays off, and it is a gamble, then all well and good. If it does not, then we face a financial cliff edge as a council. The proposed budget with maximum rates of council tax still requires substantial savings. £4 million, as noted in 4.1.5 of the budget. I have to say, I agree with the chief executive, the Section 151 officer, and the corporate lead team. These savings will be incredibly hard to make. Creating a potential need to make an additional £3 million of savings would necessitate a slash-and-burn approach to our services, which would only serve to negatively impact the very residents we are collectively determined to represent and to do our best by. If this was the first or second year of a four-year administration, there perhaps would be a stronger argument for supporting this amendment, not least because this council would be held accountable for this decision. But it is not. Our duty is to ensure the next administration starts on a firm footing. Offering what amounts to no more than a one-year short-term view places the next administration and this council in jeopardy for the medium term, but probably the long term. It is not a gamble I am prepared to take, however laudable the motivation, I'm afraid I won't be supporting this amendment. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Oxley.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, just to say that I won't be supporting this amendment. And there are more ifs in this one than there are actually in what is proposed by the Section 151 officer. And I would much rather follow the ifs of the Section 151 officer, someone who is actually well-placed to advise this council. I'm also concerned the next time we go and ask the cabinet minister for assistance financially, and we have cut our council tax, they will turn around and say, "You don't need it". So that's why I will not be supporting this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Do you want to come back then?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your comments. And very short, I go back to my speech. There are too many unknowns and unanswered questions and risks that we are managing at the moment, and I am not a gambler. I'm not prepared to gamble with the council's future and our residents' money. If at some stage in the future the economy stabilises, then I'll be happy to support reductions in council tax. With all the volatility and risks we are currently managing, now is absolutely the wrong time to reduce council tax. I will not be supporting the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just remind you, members, that this vote will be recorded. Please ensure your hand is clearly raised in the air and remains raised until it is confirmed what raised hands have been counted. The amendment is that council approves a 1% increase in local council tax and a 2% increase in social care levels, giving a total increase of 3%. All in favour?
For record, Chair, those in favour were councillors Begley, Walters, Hensley Fox, Bainesley Brown, G Brown.
Thank you. Against?
And for the record, Chair, those against the motion were councillors Dale, Stevenson, sorry, I have everyone, Powell, Payne, Willby Baines, Oxley, Brown, Wilston, Webb, Lambert, R Payne, P Brown, Boris McCarney and Walter.
Substances? Thank you, members. The amendment is defeated. Then go on to...
Is there a member? Thank you, Chair. Thank you for that debate. Given the concern expressed by many residents about the impact of the financial squeeze caused by the inflation in food and utility costs in the last year, the real increase in income tax scheduled for April 23, it would pose with the council various approaches to support those needs, although we're not necessarily claiming the LCTS benefits. There are two funding sources for support. The Government's Household Support Fund and the Council's Hardship Fund. The former includes more provisions to support those on local council tax support, but the amount is small. And the Hardship Fund is exclusively targeted at those eligible for local council tax support also. On September 21, the government announced that vulnerable households across the country were accessing new £500 million support fund to help them with essentials over the winter. This funding covered the period 6th of October to 31st of March 22. The fund was extended until the end of March 23, and the government announced it will continue again until the end of March 24. Rutland allocation has been in the region of £130,000 to £150,000 for six months. The latest Rutland was prepared and approved in October 22 in accordance with the government guidance to ensure money was distributed to those in need as quickly as possible. Presently, residents already receiving council tax support was falls into two categories. Those claiming benefits and those on the state pension. There was the opportunity for those not receiving council tax support also to make an application. The initial sum allocated was small, of just £2,000, just 1% of the total pot. The sum has increased to £5,000 and has still not been fully spent. The government has announced they will continue with the HSF during 22/24, and the current expectation is that Rutland receives a similar sum for the year, taking £300,000. I believe we found out in the last 24 hours of the year, it's £14,000, so a good estimate. Given that the current policy expires at the end of March 23, HSF will propose an updated policy to be developed for the distribution of the housing support fund and is broadened in line with the government advice, which is, "The expectation is that the fund should be used to support households in the most need, particularly those who may not be eligible for other support". particularly those who may not be eligible for other support government has recently made available but who are nevertheless in need. Those on local council tax support receive a 75% discount on their council tax compared to those who are not eligible, and they also receive an HSF payment. When the council updates its policy in line with guidance, it is therefore proposed that the allocation for those not on local council tax support is increased to £15,000 to the extent that the guidance may allow. Currently, the RCC Hardship Fund of £20,000 is only available for those already on council tax support. There is no fund available for council tax for those not on LCTS. Therefore, it is proposed that further £20,000 be allocated to extend the hardship fund in the budget specifically to those not on council tax support. This money would be allocated from the £244,900 demand-led contingency already allocated in the budget for '23, '24. If the hardship fund was at risk of being overspent, the Director of Resources may ask for additional funds to support those in hardship in line with the Cabinet's recommendation. The amendment we are proposing, therefore, is: council approves the allocation of an increased amount of funding from household support funds to support those not on local council tax support, and asks the Director of Resources to amend the Household Support Fund policy accordingly in conjunction with the portfolio of our finances. The policy we will review prior to any allocation of funds and in the second half of the HSF programme, probably around September '23, to ensure that it is meeting the objective of supporting those in need and not on local council tax support. Council approves an additional £20,000 to be allocated to the RCC Hardship Fund to be re-fenced for those on households in significant need and are not eligible for local council tax support, to be managed by the Section 151 officer under dedicated authorities. The maximum support will be capped at £100 per household. If the hardship fund was at risk of being overspent, the Director of Resources may ask for additional funds to support those in hardship in line with the recommendations which is already part of Cabinet budget proposals. Council asks that those residents who are most in need be made aware of the above programmes for the local press, social media, voluntary groups, food banks, of course, through members. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Do you have a second, then? Counselor G Brown?
Sure, I have my right to speak later, don't I?
Yes. Members, anybody? Does anyone want to speak? No? Good. Oh, Counselor.
I'll be back in if I'm not allowed to speak. If it suddenly brings in things to worry me. This is an amendment that I feel I can support. This is well-written, well-researched, and I'm very pleased with it. We do have a hardship fund. It's already under use. The concept of broadening it is a very noble one, and it's in our homes. We will all support that, certainly, yeah.
Anybody else? No? Just to remind you, members, keep your hands up. Oh, sorry, Counselor Brown.
I thought I'd punished this already. I know, I'm not standing for that. And therefore, not looking for votes, as somebody here suggested earlier, to save me. I've misunderstood. I think it's important that we recognise what's going on here, isn't it? The hardship fund is only for those who are in trouble with their local council tax. And I'm just looking at one officer, because I'm sure we discussed that. Whereas the Household Support Fund has a wider remit. And I think it's important that we recognise those two positions. I have to say, I was disappointed by the fact that the leader in the preamble to the budget report did not pick us up more clearly. I think we've, council have turned around the idea of a lower council tax, and it looks as though they won't vote in favour of the 4%, 5%. But a lot of our residents are suffering. And I think those that are on the edge of local council tax support are the ones that need the most support. And I think it's important that we recognise those, particularly. So that's the reason that we brought this forward. We'd like to identify clear sums of money that can be identified and then be allocated and be spoken about widely within our community so that people who are truly in hardship, both for food, et cetera, and for council tax, can come forward. So I think that's very important. And also, we support the last paragraph in the recommendations on the document that's put forward by Counselor Payne and the Cabinet. And that relates to the fact, against this document that we've, on these amendments we've put forward, there's a very clear position for the 151 officer to come forward and say, "We've overspent what we haven't, clearly the issues we're facing", and come back to the Cabinet with a report identifying the issues against the amendment. So that is why I'm certainly supporting the amendment, Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else? Counselor Eason?
I just want to make a short statement for me. I fully support this amendment, and it was done with obviously our residents in mind. The advice given to us by Section 151 officer was that the amendment can be accommodated within the council's budget and is operational, liberal with existing resources. That is truly excellent news. Which I'm going to leave you with a question. Why wasn't this proposed by Cabinet? Thank you.
Benson, Payne?
Thank you, Chair. Well, I think it was, in a way, because we guaranteed to keep an eye on the budget through the Section 151 officer and for him to come back and make a recommendation when that's getting low. So I think it's fair.
Counselor Oxley?
Thank you, Chair. And just for clarification, as another councillor, notwithstanding you may, I will be supporting this motion, this amendment, whatever it is. It isn't for political gain, despite what some people might think or say. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else? Let me read all the recommendations and amendments I've seen. As I said earlier, please keep your hand up so we can confirm a couple of those. All those in favour?
Thank you, Chairman. Those in favour were Councillors Dale, Beggy, Stevenson, Powell, Payne, Willby, Oxley, Brown, Wilson, Webb, Walters, Hensley, Fox, Basely, Gordon Brown, Lambert, Payne, Paul Brown, Boras and Cartney Waller, taking us to 21, Chair.
Thank you. Abstentions? An abstention, please.
One abstention for Counselor Bates.
Oxley, yeah. Go back to substantive. Right, members, you can speak if you... They can still speak. Oh, yes, the amendment was...
Please, just to speak on this one.
Right. We haven't heard anybody. Yeah, who has the right? So, members, thank you. On the substantive. Counselor Carver?
Thank you, Chair. Members, residents are going to feel very strongly that the council tax rise is bad news. And it's going to be difficult to argue to the country. But if we can just set our sights or point down the road a few years where we are in a position, we hope, by being prudent tonight, of budget surplus, we will be in a position to announce good news to residents, and we will be able to start reopening services which we have closed in the last 12, 18 months. That is something that I hope we all want to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Counselor Walters?
Chair, and I appreciate those fine words. Unfortunately, I've been hearing them since 2011. The budget of a cost of maybe £32 million, I will not be supporting this proposal.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? Do you want to come back, Counselor?
Just to say, thank you for your debate tonight. You would have understood from the speeches that the economic environment is, we are operating at the moment as highly volatile. We're all very passionate about Rutland and want the council to survive and be sustainable in the long run. I therefore urge you to support the budget I presented to you tonight and leave the next administration with a fighting chance of survival. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Members, we have a large number of recommendations, and for the benefit of the public, these are set out in folio number 38, 2023, at item 10 of our agenda. I intend to take these recommended recommendations together. As a reminder, this vote will be recorded. Please ensure your hand is clearly raised in the air and remains raised until it is confirmed all raised hands have been counted. All those in favour?
Thank you, Chair. Those in favour were Councillors Dale, Stevenson, Powell, K Payne, Willby, Baines, Oxley, A Brown, Wilson, Webb, Lambert, R Payne, P Brown, J Boras, A and Cartney Waller.
Thank you. Again?
Thank you. Those against were Councillors Beggy, Walters, Hensley, Fox, Basely and G Brown.
Abstentions? No abstentions? Thank you. We have no more such motions tonight. Thank you. I can draw on your business. Your business, please. Date of the next meeting is on the 27th of March. Thanks to all for your attendance.